Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Atsigo City Council meeting. Tonight is Monday, October thirteenth. Audra, can you have the record show that our city attorney, city planner, city engineer, along with all council members, our assistant, city administrator, and our city are all present? At this time, I'll ask you all to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it is one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first item of business this evening is a special recognition of our 2025 contest winners. This is the city's ninth annual photo contest. There were nine participants that submitted a total of sixteen photos. Two hundred and seventy-three votes were cast online and three hundred and thirty-six were done during our Prairie Festival. The city council would like to thank all the participants for their submission showcasing the city of Atsigo. The city will now present, we have two winners, certificates, their photos framed, and a hundred dollars to this year's winners. The first is online winner, which is photo name Frosted Horizon. The winner is Lauren Green. And she is not present this evening, but Audra, you have the photo up. So, so one on the left. Lauren is also actually one of our public safety commissioners, so we will talk about evening. And the second is our Prairie Festival winner. The photo name was Farm Friends. And this evening, we will be presenting the framed certificate and the hundred dollars to Ashley. And she's in the audience this evening. Could come up and counsel if you'd like to come down. Ashley, is it Mel Quinn?
Mel was fine, perfect.
All right. Your spots. Our next item of business is our open forum. This is the portion of the meeting where you can come to the podium, state your name and address, and limit comments to five minutes or less. What do anyone like to speak at this time?
Hello, everybody. Jeannie Holland, County Commissioner. First of all, I just want to say Prairie Fest was again such a great event. I look forward to this every, unfortunately, I had an evening commitment and I was so upset because I love watching the fireworks and, but it's just so amazing to see all the hard work and all the families and their dogs and just everybody's so happy. And I just have so many good comments about your Prairie Fest every year. And I'm so glad. And it was really nice this year. I thanked the county because Ross came with the parks. So Connie put all the Wright County Stan area and everybody appreciated that. And Ross was so amazed that he had more interaction there than he had at the county fair. So, really, really, yeah, yeah. So, and they, they enjoyed it and it's going to be a thing that they do for, for you guys every year. So, excited about that. And then we certified the levy at five point five seven. I don't know, I sent to Adam a PowerPoint. So if you, he'll send it to you, you can kind of see kind of a breakdown of all, like, kind of how we came to that and the cost. But yeah, we were very, very happy. We did a lot of streamlining. We did a lot of hard decisions. But we knew because of, you know, our growing county that the cities, you know, are taking some hits. So we're very happy to get to that number. And other than that, I was a couple of weeks ago down in Washington DC for Transportation Alliance, Ninety-four Coalition. We are now starting to hit hard on the Fish Lake Interchange. And I told Amy Klobuchar, I said, you got to realize that fastest growing county in Minnesota and all those people have to go to work. And the minute you turn on the news, they'll, and listen to the traffic report, they always say. And it's getting clogged up by the Fish Lake Interchange. And so she's, you're right, it is growing out that way. So, a lot of good support for it. We're going to keep pushing, you know, the wheels of government don't always go quickly. But really hoping that, you know, we can start moving in the direction of fixing that. Atsigo residents, you know, that go to work that way and have to come home. It is quite a mess. And then the county is trying to get some gap funding over in Clearwater. Because they're going to be doing some redesigning of the road in Clearwater. Mindot is dedicated money the county has. And then we're just hoping for some gap funding to finish and widen that road, do some roundabouts kind of by the Clearwater Travel Plaza. And our big plan would be, we want to start looking at getting across the river between Monticello and Clearwater. So, right now with just you guys having, you know, Parish Avenue and then Monticello. Monticello, you guys in Monticello really feel the heat of traffic going up north. So hopefully, we're, we're, we're starting to really hit that hard and hopefully come up with a solution to get across that river. But going, getting across this is a major undertaking. So, hopefully, but yeah, but otherwise, you guys are doing a great job. Anybody have any questions for me?
Mayor, I have a quick question. I don't know if you're going to know this answer, Jeannie, or if it's more of a Ron. I talked to Sarah about nineteen a while back. And now it's closed again. Left lane is closed, the same place it was, I don't know, maybe a month ago. And she said it was supposed to be done two weeks ago or whatever. It's been longer than that. Now, again, at the same, right before the nineteenth and seventieth or thirty-eighth at Roundabout. It's that left lane is closed. And I didn't, when I went this morning, it wasn't backed up. But I'm not quite sure why they keep closing that lane all the way back, close it right at the first light, right by the Alton Mall, if they need to close it.
Yeah, I wonder, is it because they're putting that, because the bridge is done?
They put curb on the right-hand side. Now, I don't, that's on the right side on nineteen. But I'm not sure why that left lane is closed.
Yeah, I'll ask Sarah tomorrow. I have to go see her anyways. And that's another good point. I did say to Albertville that it was a, is kind of a slight miracle that the Mindot didn't do their signatures and get us the money till the end. So we only had a week of that obnoxious, like, closing of thirty-seven, everybody being routed on nineteen. I know kids were getting to school late. Thankfully, it was only a week and a half. I'm sure you guys all got calls. Thank you for reaching out. I was in DC when you reached, reached out and we tackled that. And yeah, Chad was with me and said, oh yeah, that's not good. Found out that the contractors weren't doing like they were supposed to. So got that figured out, but we'll check on that and see.
That'd be great.
Yeah, and then hopefully that's done soon.
I know.
Because next, next summer, it will be a kind of a mess. But, yeah, but it's at least for this one and next year, then we're done. So, doesn't help that their main street dug up too. Correct, yeah, so, thank you. But yeah, thanks, everybody.
Thanks, you.
Call me if you need me.
All right, Kenneth David ID and I'm here for this letter I got from the city of, for one four one six six sixty-seven circle northeast.
Mayor, that item's on the agenda as a code enforcement assessment.
Okay, so under four point one, so we can let you speak during four point one since it's in regards to that law?
Yes.
We will have time. We will have a public hearing under four point one for, in regards to your letter.
I'm sorry.
So, on item four point one, which is our public hearing for proposed assessment role, we will be conducting a public hearing, which then you would be able to bring up your item to discuss it at that point for you.
So not today?
No, it is today. It's just in a few, later on the agenda.
Okay, let me know.
Yes. Anyone else during open forum? All right, we will close the open forum and move up to consider our agenda for approval. Does anyone have anything that they'd like to add or delete at this time?
Madam Mayor?
That's right.
I move to as written.
Second.
Motion by Ryan, seconded by Corey. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Next item is item three, our consent agenda. Motion would be in order.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, right?
I move to approve the consent agenda as written.
Second.
Motion by Ryan, seconded by Corey. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Passes. Next item is item four point one, proposed assessment role of unpaid special charges. I'll turn this over to our city planner.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is the process the city follows annually to assess the fines related to code enforcement that have not been paid to date or resolved. Just by bit of background, complaints are handled. Code enforcement is done on a complaint basis. This is a process used by most cities in the state. City doesn't want to be in a position, getting out violations, being accused basically of a witch hunt. So, we don't act unless there's a complaint that's obviously drawn attention from a surrounding property owner as to a concern. All complaints once received are anonymous. Basically, the city takes action as the complainant. We investigate the complaint and the action from that point forward is between the city and the property owner. Complaints are tracked via the city's software system and administered internally by city staff. The process involves an initial complaint. We do an inspection from the street or sidewalk, basically from public property to see if there is in fact a potential violation. Building department can issue stop work orders if necessary, if it's related to construction. We've received to send an advisory letter requesting that the property owner contacts city staff regarding the potential violation. To describe what the nature of the violation is, what measures would be needed to correct that. At this point, we're not stating penalties. We want to try and work with property owners and not, so you could basically give them ten days to contact us and set up an action plan on how we can resolve this matter. At any point during this process, if it's taken care of, we obviously close the file. If we don't get contact or the property owner doesn't follow through, inspect the property, determine specifically which violation of the code exists. We'll take photographs of those and again, attempt to contact the property owner. We at this point send what's known as an administrative notice. It's a template form that specifically states the city code violation and penalties. Again, the property owner has ten days to respond to city staff. And again, what we're looking for is contact to agree to a schedule by which the violation can be resolved satisfactorily to both the city and the property owner. Again, last step would be issuance of a citation if the violation persists or we haven't received contact. Again, this is a template form citing the city code violation and imposing a two hundred dollar fine. Under the city code, each day a violation exists is violation. But we typically only issue citations on a periodic basis to allow, again, property owner a chance to respond. There also is an appeal process that they can, in writing, submit to the city within fifteen days of receiving that patient. Even if they do appeal, again, our goal is to work with them to try and resolve this without having to involve the official appeal hearing, which we conduct with an independent officer. Basically functions as a mini trial where they present what their points are, the city, what the violation is. And that officer can then dismiss the complaint, extend a deadline or uphold the citation going forward. It's pretty rare at this point that we ever get to the appeal process simply because we are very willing to work with property owners to try and resolve issues. So, so the public hearing tonight is to consider adoption of assessments for unpaid fines and charges. The charges are primarily related to abatement costs that the city would incur. For example, having to mow property that has not been maintained in accordance with city code. These are all violations or open cases where the appeals have lapsed. Basically, because the city code sets out the appeal process to work through a resolution. This is not a forum to discuss whether or not a violation has occurred. It's the imposing that fine. So the assessment includes any administrative fines, again, at two hundred dollars per citation, any costs incurred by the city for abatement of a violation, as well as an administrative fee of a hundred dollars for city staff time to prepare the assessment role through with Wright County on the assessment. So the assessment role that's before the city council tonight, notices were sent to property owners, allowing them till October third to pay the fine and charges without incurring the administrative fee. If the assessment adopted, the property owners further have until November seventeenth to pay that fine without incurring interest. But otherwise, the assessments would be courted with Wright County to be paid over with property taxes in twenty twenty-six with an interest charge of two five percent. There is an update to the assessment role included in the packet. Property one one eight zero two four zero zero four zero two zero was a resolved issue. Staff verified that and is recommending that from the assessment role. So city staff does recommend adoption of resolution twenty twenty-five dash fifty-two as amended.
Thank you. At this time, I will open the public hearing for the proposed assessment role of unpaid special charge. Would anyone like to speak at this time? Sure.
Kenneth David ID, one four one six six sixty-seven circle Atsigo.
Yes.
And, uh, yeah, we're working, cleaning up the property and getting it nice. I was wondering how I'm supposed to pay this.
Dan? Mayor, you can contact city staff in the morning to pay that.
Okay.
Prior to the assessment being sent to the county saving the interest charge.
Okay, so that's it then?
Yep, and then, Mayor, if you could follow up with me, just contact city hall and ask for the city planner. We can discuss your process and progress on cleaning up the property.
Yeah.
So that we can avoid, avoid future citation.
So who do I ask for?
Daniel Lekt.
Daniel?
Yep.
All right, I'll talk to you tomorrow.
Very good.
The city hall here?
Yep, I'll be at city hall.
All right, Daniel.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other comments for the public hearing?
Isabel, I just, you know, don't know, this is not for me. I just realized this, but what I'm looking at here is something that we, citizen used to not pay. Now we get more charged. And charging the charge. So what I'm looking is now you got short of money and you are trying to make up like more fees for the community. I see is before people used to not pay interest in four point two five. And what I'm looking in here is you guys are looking more, more money to collect for you. The stuff that you decide to lie to the community. Now we gotta pay nineteen something of taxes. And now you're making more fees up for the community. You're not thinking about people, you're not thinking about our community. Thank you.
Dan, can you comment on?
Mayor, I was just looking at when the code enforcement administrative provisions were adopted as part of the city code. I can't find the file, but my recollection, it was sometime during the two thousands. So the city has done this for more than twenty years. This is a routine process. Most cities implement enforced codes. Again, the goal is to avoid issuance of fines and work with property owners. The costs for code enforcement greatly exceed any amounts being considered tonight. As part of the overall, it's not a revenue generating proposition. It's a public health, safety, and welfare enforcement issue.
Is there any other comments? Any other comments? We will close the public hearing and consider adopting resolution for unpaid special charges on the assessment role. Again, everyone should have their updated form with the one parcel removed because they worked with staff and were removed. Dan, just because a resident did ask, how, this is for a whole year. So, you've worked with, I'm sure this assessment of this, the people that potentially were on the list was larger. But your goal is always to work with them, explain what the issues are on their property and how they can rectify it to avoid on a citation.
Correct. Mayor, we typically have, I'd say, between five and a dozen complaints a month that we typically work through more in the summer when it's related to grass mowing and weeds, et cetera. But typically junk abatement. It's, our goal is obviously to work with people whenever possible to achieve the result of getting the property cleaned up and making the issue go away.
Right, any other questions or comments? Kind of motion?
Madam Mayor, I move to adopt resolution twenty twenty-five dash fifty-two, adopting an assessment role for unpaid special charges with the amended exhibit A.
Second. Motion by Ryan, seconded by Michelle. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to city council reports and updates, does anyone have anything?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
The OHPC will be meeting tomorrow night at seven PM at city hall. And I'd like the park and rec staff for a great pumpkin day. Had a lot of people, I think. Last one I talked to Connie, it's eleven hundred.
Yeah, it was around eleven hundred, yeah. It was, you stole my thunder. That's okay, it's all right. No, it turned out as a beautiful day for the event. A little chilly if you're in the shade, but if you're in the sun, it was perfect. So a lot of kids showed up, lots of cute costumes. It was a great event. Park and Rec always does a great job. Yes, they do. So, any other city council reports are up?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
The next planning commission meeting will be on Monday, the twentieth. Currently, there's two public hearing items. One is for a smaller development, a Lennar development of twenty-three homes off County Road thirty-eight. The other one is a public hearing for a comprehensive plan amendment, also a zoning ordinance change for A two district.
Perfect, thank you.
And then just one more item, just kind of wanted to bring to everyone's attention. Earlier in the, under consent agenda, we approved item three dot one six, which is for delinquent utility bills. I just looked over the past couple of years and that amount has gone up by, in just one year, fifty-two and a half percent. It's gone up over almost two hundred percent in the past three years. To me, that's a strong indicator that residents are struggling when we see an increase in delinquent utility bills. Because this is not just people missing payments, this is a chronic delinquency problem. And to me, that's an issue I just think we should take note of. Thank you.
Yeah. Any other updates? Moving on to staff reports and updates. Sabrina?
Thank you, Mayor. No updates.
Adam?
Mayor, council, I had no updates, but in response to Councilman Dunn Labs' comment, I did look at that earlier and there is one unique parcel on there that is representing almost seventeen percent of the total delinquencies. So I did not go back and look at historical, but there is a unique balance on there that certainly driving that number up this year. So we hope to get that resolved soon.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks.
Audra? Thank you, Mayor. I was just going to let you know that two of the independent school districts are holding a list. That'd be Monticello and St. Michael, Albertville. And those residents should check the Minnesota Secretary of State's website for their polling location. And to note that the city of Atsigo has no races on the November fourth ballot.
Thank you.
We, information, could we put that on our, to direct maybe links for residents if they do look on the city of Atsigo website where they could find that information easily?
We do have some information on the website under elections and we'll see if we can refine tune it a little bit after we've done a little research on where to start to look for that information.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dave?
No updates, thanks, Mayor.
All right, Dan?
Mayor, no update.
All right, Ron?
I'll just give you some city project updates again. Got four, four city projects playing on. Odine Avenue Water Main, that started today. So the path is closed and Seventy-seventh Street, a short little piece just right off of Odine, is closed. No, no houses are affected to get in and out. That's going to go on for about three weeks and then that'll be completed. The Eightieth Street Trail, they plan on paving that this week, then putting the concrete ADA ramps in later. So that's almost completed and then to trail, they'll be shouldering that this week. It's paved, the concrete's in. The only things that are left are striping and signage and then seating on both those projects. Once it gets cooler for dormant seating, it's, it's too late in the season to put down seed. The Costco right at Marlowe Avenue, that's has concrete being placed, so it's moving along.
All right.
That's all I have.
Thank you. All right, Jason Albin's with Wright County Sheriff's.
I was just looking at the clock and determining how much time I'll take up. So.
Take up every amount of time you want.
You say it.
I do, I do say that.
Well, so I was looking at.
Always interested in what you have to say.
I was looking at my list and I was trying to be conscientious about it, knowing that I'm going to take up probably an hour tomorrow night for public safety. So I'm trying to, trying to look at that. So I had a number of things that were on my list and so as I go over my list, I'm going to be kind of intentionally vague with a handful of them. So I apologize about that. I'm trying to provide an update, but at the same time, kind of respect because it's, I think there's a lot of stuff that people are going through on some of these calls, so bear with me on it. One, thank you to the city, specifically Nick Jacobs and Adam Flaherty, it helped me out. This was three weeks ago, but we did have an operation in town with our emergency response team. So, council member Tanner, I know you had reached out about it because it's kind of your neck of the woods over there. So, when something happens with our emergency response team, which is a fancy term for a SWAT team, we have a lot of different people involved and we had a number of agencies that were involved. So in that particular case, we had a lot of personnel, it was upwards of forty different people in different roles. So we kind of took over Prairie Center, so we were disruptive to staff that particular morning and we kind of had to make some changes. Or I didn't have to make any changes. I kind of stormed into his office and demanded the use of the building. And he agreed to figure out, problem solve a little bit. So some staff did kind of get misplaced that morning so that we could, to kind of go over operations brief so that we could do that the correct way and make sure that we had the plan in place. So, thank you to that. That was disruptive. And I recognize having all of that equipment sitting in the parking lot here can be a little, like I said, disruptive and a little invasive to the city. But we tried to, the city had it back when we could. Handful of things on e-bikes, I know we've had the conversation. Handful of things on e-bikes. I know we've had the conversation up here a handful of times and all public safety, we've had a handful of uh conversations about it. We're still kind of monitoring it. I'm almost kind of like, again, waiting for some of the other cities to through some of the motions on what their legal process is and kind of almost like all a cart picking what what's working for other agencies, what's working for other cities on how they do either ordinances or how they do their enforcement. It's still pretty chaotic out there. We still are getting across the, we definitely had a pretty serious one down in the southwest part of the county. I think it was about two and a half weeks ago, three weeks ago, where just poor, poor kid out just by himself. And I think just probably hit a rut or something like that on a, on a trail and uh hit his head pretty bad. So um these things are, these things are dangerous, the speed's low. We're trying to get the educational enforcement out there. Really, really don't like having to, like I said, you'd be in the business of pulling over teenagers on bicycles, you know. I I recognize they're e-bikes and they have engines on them. So but we're trying to get the education out there to kind of back it down. It's not other people that are on the trail that people are just doing by and on five. So um we're working on that. Um that's just gonna be more to come. I think that's just gonna be, I honestly, this is turning into like, it's gonna be like a two-year thing. We're just getting everybody on board with a culture of slowing down. Uh there's been a number of issues. I'm switching gears and I don't do a very good segue with my talk. Number of issues at some of the parks in the, in uh the city specifically, School and Old Park, that has been a problem for whatever reason this year in particular. Um we actually have a deputy that's assigned to working on that particular problem. Uh I was just trying to problem solve it and make sure that we're associating the correct names so that we can get the correct enforcement on those particular uh uh problem uh people. So um we're working on that. He's spending some time on it and really is trying to go the right way so that we can be able to use that park. I, obviously, the city put some money into that park here in the last uh year. Uh we want people to enjoy that park and not have to worry about any uh other shenanigans going on. So he's really trying to work on that side of things. So um more come. Uh there has been a couple of issues with an individual at the uh Dartmouth River Bend. Um I will, again, this is kind of where it'd be very vague. Um I will, I will applaud two of the deputies, Deputy Dan Warren specifically, really had to problem solve this to handle this in the correct way. Difficult situation all around. Again, staring, trying to choose my words carefully, because I want to be respectful to the resident, uh the family members. But um pretty dangerous situations on occasion. Um so we really had to really problem solve and put some thought into it, use the appropriate uh use statutes uh so that we could uh try to leverage some assistance to not only uh, not only the person that's involved with the uh the residents that are over there too. Because it was a pretty dangerous situation. So uh still traffic issues near Costco, that things have been opening up a little bit. It's better here in the last week. Um I was just kind of going through there today. At least we can kind of maneuver around in there a little bit. I kind of drove through the construction site today, so you can't go through, you know, point A to point B super easy. But um a little bit better for everybody that's over there and it's, I think everyone's kind of figuring out the correct routes and the routes that they want to go. So um, a lot of calls. Uh as you can see, I've got a number of things and I'm kind of all listing off all at the same time. Probably about eleven, I think, was just shy of eleven, eleven hundred calls in the city in the last thirty days. Lot. I I think we um a number, you know, one or two years ago, I think, I had said that uh over the course of a July weekend or uh July and I don't know if it was twenty twenty-three or whatever it is, I said, hey, first month that we've ever had a thousand, more than a thousand calls in the city of Otsego. Uh that's pretty much the standard um of where we're at at that one thousand, whether it's just by very below or just above. Like I said, thirty days, we're like eleven hundred. We're getting up there. That was a lot. Sorry, I was just kind of talking. Just kind of.
No.
Questions for me or any?
Regarding your eleven hundred calls in the last thirty days, has there been one thing that stands out or it's just been all over?
No, I I honestly, I, it's not necessarily that there's any one particular style of call or any major, it's just that's more running. Uh again, fast growing city, you're gonna have that many more people either driving through or in the city at any given time, that that number will increase. Um I always kind of give the example, you know, if we, we go take a fifty thousand people and put them at the US Bank Stadium, there's gonna be call, because that many people are showing up, whether it's a medical call or whatever the case. Do you throw that many people together? That's, that's what happens. So once the city gets X amount more people, it's just, there's a correlation. And I think at least the graph is looking appropriate. You know, I'm more visual aware, I guess, when it comes to that. Looks appropriate. It's not like there's a big spike suddenly. Again, maybe I, you know, once we get from the three-digit number to the four-digit number of the nine hundred to the eleven hundred, something like that, it seems like a big jump, but I, again, I think it's just, that's just where we're at. Just kind of interesting to look at on the computer, like I said. We're, we're in the hundreds of calls, where the cases and hours and thousands, so.
Um regarding School and Old, is there anything we can do as a council to help make that better?
I don't think so. We're trying to use, again, kind of the same thing. We're trying to use the appropriate uh statutes. I think the, the main, it's a park, right? So like, we don't want to be showing up and, you know, being an authoritarian or occupation for sort of park, like that's the last thing people want, is thinking we're, you know, watching them. It's like, yeah, is that power wheels going to? You know, we don't want to be doing that. So um we're definitely trying to keep an eye on things, like I said, use the appropriate statutes when appropriate. Um I, I think the statutes and ordinances that are on the book are the appropriate ones so that we can enforce it, so that we can I don't, I don't, like I said, I don't want residents to go to the park and have to feel uncomfortable because of people that are going beyond. It's one thing, um Franklin Park, I'll use Franklin Park as an example. The sun goes down and for whatever reason, some of the, the older kids like to get out there and make it a little bit uncomfortable for the parents and uh, you know, with some of the language that's being used. That's, that's one thing. I, I think that's kind of a, that's more of an educational thing on the parents, less than enforcement. The School and Old Park thing has turned into all enforcement things. Things are getting damaged. You know, other kids are not, like, they're feeling genuinely unsafe out there with some of the stuff that's going on. So we're just trying to curb that. So like I said, totally recognize how much money was spent on the, the updates, the School and Old Park, and we want people to enjoy it.
More unique with the vegetation, I think, and stuff around there that.
It, yeah, it is. And that's kind of the discussion we've had. And so the, one of the deputies that's working on it is uh one of the school resource officers that spends some time at the elementary school there and is like, hey, right out the backyard literally for the school. So I'm kind of getting involved in that, so.
You had a number of things on your calls, but I, a resident did reach out to me about uh the dump trucks on Queens and I guess it's a thirty-seven over there by Quick Trip lately and the engine braking and.
Thirty-eight.
I'll still call it thirty-seven. Yeah, I'm sure you have to prioritize.
Yeah, so we've, we have, over the past couple of years, we try to spend some time. Um it seems to go on waves over on Queen Avenue. Um again, it comes, it becomes a bit of an educational issue with, that we do, if we do have a, you know, somebody that's driving a truck. Um you know, they'll sit there and they, I had no idea, you know, they, I think they expect to go through every different, different uh uh you know, jurisdiction and expect signs everywhere to say when they can and can't use it in braking, when they can. So we try to do, again, educational thing. Part of it is they just get, I mean, from all the different centers there. It's, you know, hundreds of trucks every day, you know, different drivers every single day. As we try to tell, like Ruon, is a perfect example. It's like a lot of their drivers are there every single, so we can get them on board. So uh yeah, it'll be a little bit of a challenge. Now, we got some more stuff. I know the, the distribution center, I think, is up and running for the Circle K holiday down there. So and they have taken over the road for them. Yeah, so.
Okay.
Does anyone have anything else?
I was like thirteen minutes. Sorry, everybody.
No, it's okay. That's okay. Alright, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Alright, if no one else has anything, then a motion to adjourn would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Corey, seconded by Michelle. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Meeting has ended. Thank you all for attending this evening.